Mr. Vane. President, Mr. Gettmer?
Here.
Um, suppose you roll?
Yeah.
Mr. Tien?
Yes.
Mr. Guinness?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Cool.
Um, oh, okay. Can we have a call? Thank you. All right, um, our next order of business is the Senate of Appeals. So if you can for that. The Republicans in the United States. For the Supreme Court, we're voting for one nation, all our lives. It is so important to the people of the world. On public comment, um, it's been. Uh, we will not open the court of public comments. In view of the judge before, please fill out the dedicated client sheet at the table. It looks like this. I mean, you can see where it is. Um, keep your word that comments made during the time are not protected from potential legal liability. As a reminder, the board will not respond to or engage in dialogue with individuals seeking to get the public comment. The board deserves the right to live at the length of public comments. And if that decides that right to live in meetings, we will limit hours for three minutes. For total of no more than thirty minutes allowed for all public comments. Again, all comments be made respectfully and in a manner that does not affect the meaning. Um, with that said, I would invite our first, um, speaker, uh, Dr. Tej on the task force.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Dr. Tej on the task field here at Pitt County District of the Fifth District. And I am here to stand in solidarity with SEI on these issues. We right now are in a tumultuous time in our country. It is imperative that at the local level, that we are cohesive, we are inclusive, and we are diverse. But more importantly, that we're working collaboratively together. It is imperative to our children that we're all on the same page as it relates to how their education could move forward. Our maintenance work, make no mistake about it, it doesn't matter how good your curriculum may be. Without the maintenance work, education does not work. They need clean buildings. They need buildings that are temperature controlled. They need buildings that are safe. So when we begin to speak about these things, it imperative, not just for the workers, but for our administration and our parents, to come together and create a think tank that puts everyone on the same page. Because everyone's not going by working to be the children. This is not something that government should need to get involved in. This is something that in basic human nature, in humanity, respect and integrity, we should allow everyone to work in their workplace with dignity. There is absolutely no reason why we're not including our, all of our staff in our safety training. Nationwide, we're having many school shootings, many issues going on with our churches being put on fire. It's imperative, again, you'll continue to hear me for word imperative, because it's important that you understand that the decisions that you make here are impacting our future. It is unfortunate and a catch 22 that we have young people in this room that need to participate and listen to these types of conversations. When on an adult level, that's where these decisions are being made. But they're impacting how they go and how they live day to day. So I implore you, let's work together as adults. If there's anything that we can do at the county level to help negotiate or to help move this situation forward, please allow us to do that. Because in order for this to work, we need every person in this room to be actively involved in a progressive measure to ensure that we're including everyone in our process. Regardless of race, creed, color, ethnicity, economic status, whatever. So with that being said, I thank you again so much for allowing me to take this time. But I am asking, including with this administration, that you take into consideration that people's ability to communicate is necessary. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Lee.
My name is Pam Castro, a resident of New Orleans. I'm happy for all members to investigate the termination of this particular employee from 2019 to 2025 and any future employees to be considered for termination. Some of these employees were given four evaluations after speaking on health and other concerns, overall safety concerns, and being involved in union grievances. Final, what are these employees to do when harassment, bullying, intimidation, and racism coming from a certain principal, director, and assistant to building and ground, assistant to the superintendent and superintendent? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have the staff members.
Good evening, I'm Doug Taylor, and I am one of the field organizers assigned from STIU 73 to the municipal community unit here. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, but I have to stay as by necessity. We feel this is really important, it's one of those things we have to talk about tonight. We find ourselves in a disrespectful situation with the current administration and the climate that's set by Superintendent McKay and Assistant Superintendent Tisch, that is the one that they fought for here. Many of our members spoke last month at the school board meeting, but we didn't ask them to repeat those stories. But I'm going to summarize some of those comments tonight. We've had some racist workplace practices in the past. Uh, workers told them Spanish, they can't speak Spanish. Advocates not allowed to sidebar inspect with workers. We had that lack of safety training I just mentioned. Administration has refused our request to train. So that we know what to do to help people sit in safe. And the administration refused to notify everyone under the lockdown. We've also had some anti-union attacks. Uh, we've got management has lost fair representation of workers by their advocates by the Illinois International River Protection Act. Management has harassed and targeted some of our union staffers and staffs. We have a number of instances where employees have been told not to listen to the union during new hiring negotiations, union backing going on. Marketing requests go without answer, and they're answered very selectively. We see the current administration's targeting union stewards with extra supervision and criticism because of their union activity we feel. And Jeff Rutherford has been intimidating and hovering over one of our two stewards. The grievance process here feels very ceremonial. We'll have a presentation in step two in the same room. Step three, no new information with broad-based administration, we're not making progress without the following problems. Generally, many of the employees who feel disrespected, they have a fear of retaliation, and they suffer parrotary discipline. Maria Corona is one example of a terminated employee who worked here for nineteen years and currently has taken a sick pay. She emailed her principal to use the online program she had received. She had email that she received. Terminated anyway. She's left with the feeling that the administration here doesn't care about their importance. We have an example, Molly Sexton was a teacher here, and had health concerns and moved her building without an elevator. Basically forced out because of that. And this is a climate that we're working in. So we're going to present some of the divisions tonight that we circulate. In just barely eleven days, we have over nine hundred students from people who live in this community. In this community, we're neighbors, people that have escaped in the education of the students here. Uh, so Superintendent McKay and Assistant Superintendent Tisch have lost the influence of the community. Let's bring up the positions.
Madam President of the Board, you have the time to say.
Uh, you can. Um, all right, and we will turn it out to Janet, thank you. Well, who does our, uh, head of number nine? I don't know. Okay. All right, sorry, moving on, um. The next is a little hard to be quite, I apologize if I, um, you know, tell all the others. I'll be out, thank you so much. I'll be out. Oh, okay, thank you. All right, moving on, now we're back.
Four hundred administrative years of the year. Thank you for having me here tonight. For those who don't know, my name is Molly Sexton, my professor of district one therapy for nineteen years. I've been working on it until August tenth, when I was pushed to retire from the district due to how I have entered a condition multiple sclerosis by everybody access to an elevator. Many of you already know my story. As I still think back in April, asking for help so that I could escape the career I dedicated nearly two decades to. That home never came. And to make matters worse, in the official board notes from that meeting, my statement was reduced to, and I quote, Molly Sexton commended the leadership. That moment filled volumes, not just about what was written, but what was ignored. I'm here tonight to ask a simple question, that what is this board doing from the growing number of complaints concerned from established community members? Do you not believe an entire union of employees reporting discrimination and retaliation? Do you not believe me, as a voted teacher of this community for nineteen years, who simply needed a reasonable accommodation to continue doing my job? I'd like to point out a few facts. Since April twenty twenty five, there has been fourteen public comments from staff and parents addressing the same issue, the toxic leadership within our administration. There is an active petition with over nine hundred signatures calling for the removal of Tommy McKay and Gary Tisch for their ongoing retaliation in terms of discriminatory behavior. Between August twenty twenty four and June twenty twenty five, there were eleven employee terminations, two settlements with local Unit seventy three, and one settlement with a former employee that also tied to the same individual, Gary Tisch, with the same issues, retaliation and discrimination. And yet the silence from the board continues, and then it's not one community that's getting any of that, just approved it off. I reached out to the board multiple times respectfully and in good faith, believing that fresh leadership will bring accountability and compassion instead of being ignored and treated like a problem to be erased. After I resigned, Gary Tisch and Tommy McKay continued to retaliate. Even bones are recording me to I S B and attempting to have my teaching license suspended for not resigning in time, even all due to their participation in my interactive process that I did. They held my nineteen years of professional personal hold on these houses for good weeks and left my hold on these outstanding green to get a holding room. They told me they'd return it only if I agreed on their term of one interviews. That's exactly what happened. This kind of behavior doesn't just destroy career, it destroys trust, morale, and the integrity of the district. If you want the truth from the inside, I urge you to review the same interviews that were conducted under human resources. These interviews led by John Douglas from September twenty twenty four to March twenty twenty five, gathered dated from eighty seven persons across multiple schools, met identified by our secretary. For seven months, these interviews appeared in the H R reports, yet no data has ever been shared publicly or even a transcript. Not even to those eighty teachers who put their own time to participate. As a result, please get them from Truthful John Douglas. So this is not a personal vengeance, this is about conduct that can be applied, and the main reason this all happened to me, by disease. This is about the teachers and custodians and staff, and most importantly, the students who want to deserve better. Please listen, please look deeper, ask questions to the man transfers. Our educators, our educators and community members have been speaking up for months. The evidence in there, the voices are here, this board needs to.
All right, thank you, and that, um, is all I have for public comments. Thank you, um, just saying that. Uh, moving on, we will call to send out three commendations and recognition. Uh, first up is the October twenty twenty five personal recognition.
Yes, and the board member.
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you for, um, flagging that, thank you. Um, okay.
One minute. Right here.
Yes.
I was reviewing the agenda for the meeting, it's a major concern that Daniel Budd is still not being presented for approval. But that on the thirty, the day of our pass. For judgment, taking place, this could be violation of Illinois law, really certiorari, we got any prior decision. I've served numerous years on this board, and it's never happened before. We have been honored to support by any man affirmed by the state agency, may commonly have never done anything in the wrong. There is no reason that judges and representatives should approve that out of time. We may reach out and spending any money before decisions made by the board president to hold the board leadership. Also finding extremely troubling is the board president has her husband providing his foot while the budget is still being developed. This individual, Tony Oliver, is a gladiant, and is sold a software program with the city bladdering in the high school district two eighteen. Where the current president fights with board members from all those appearances, which definitely looks like a major consequence of injury. I am recommending that the board suspend further visits until the budget is presented and approved without the budget, we can't legally pay anyone. And the pressing is meeting the enduring, and no additional visits is conducted until the budget has been presented and passed. I will be privately well complaint with the regional superintendent requesting the review of the conduct of the board president, have no action stations that will have support in matters of the Illinois Attorney Federal Office to investigate the sample ethical statutory violation. Our elected position that provides student staff and tax payers in the district down decision making. We need to approve the budget with the people. I have for German, do I have a second? One second. Call please. Uh, motion to adjourn meeting, Mr. Vane is not here. Uh, Mr. Gettmer?
Yes.
Suppose you roll?
No.
Mr. Guinness?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Vane, you sure the rights are no? Mr. Tien?
No.
Uh, motion tonight.
All right, thank you. Are there any other board members coming?
Yes. Um, I just want to share a little bit about the Eisenhower marching band night that happened last week, or maybe the week before. Um, for the great experience for our students, I also just want to say thank you to Dr. Anthon for allowing our students that opportunity, and for our own band directors, for working with Dr. Anthon to keep that all in that. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is the Kerr Veterans Spring Musical. Um, I'm very excited and full support of this musical. It's an amazing and wonderful experience for our students. I've been a parent volunteer for the past two years and have watched all the students who participate create friendships, learn new skills, and enjoy the time with it. However, as a parent of the student that has participated in the musical for the past two years, and as a parent volunteer, veterans is not set up to accommodate the musical. Due to how the heating and cooling system works, last year the heat was still on, and it was beyond hot. The performers were hot, sweaty, and a little on the cranky side as a result. Makeup constantly needed to be touched off due to the melting off, or help keep people's glasses on their faces. The students were exhausted, but their adrenaline and love of performing, the audience laughing and clapping for them, kept them going. At the time veterans was built, it was probably a state of the art auditorium. The reality is that it no longer meets the current needs, and it's not conducive to having a musical. There's no room backstage. The students had to run, yes, run, through the teacher's lounge to get to one side of the stage to the other. The choir room and band room were utilized as dressing rooms. Our board was put out the window so no one could see in. To go into the dressing room, you had to knock, say who you were, and ask if everyone was dressed. The number of water or beverages that performers were drinking to stay hydrated was ridiculous. Our students, musical directors, choreographer, volunteers, and audience members deserve that. I would also like to address the number of audience members that had to leave the auditorium during the performance to get some air, so they didn't pass out. There was one instance where an individual needed a chairlift due to mobility issue. I personally asked several people and was told to check with the security guard, but no one seemed to know how to use it. It took approximately twenty minutes to find a key for the lift, but even I'm the person assisting, didn't know how to use it. Being a handicapped accessible auditorium is only good if people in the building know how to use the equipment. I suggest that we find a different location or venue to have our spring musical that our students use. Thank you.
Are there any other board members coming?
Yes, I have some of the words on, I was going to commend the Nathan Hillman at the Shepherd. Of all the students, I thought they were wonderful. Um, and I don't know if you know about the other friends that are in the camera, which I don't think is difficult, regardless, but, um, awesome, good things happening in Kerr.
Thank you. Any others? All right, now we'll move on then to commendations and recognitions. Um, our October twenty five personal recognition is first up, and I'll invite, um, Mr. Rupert and Mr. Douglas to give the recognition.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jack, I'm a freshman. We have the volunteer. Um, I wanted to, um, not many three people to be recognized here for this special honor, thank you. Um, the first person is maintenance member, in Harley, our team. Um. Well, maybe partly because I think he goes above and beyond in all aspects. He's always reached both, he comes in after hours to help out. He's been a special part of training our new employees that we have with the district. And, you know, he honestly has been a nice guy. We'd love you to have him. The second person I nominated is Louis Jackson, or Lou Jack, if you know him. Um, Lou Jack is a custodian for us who works in Nathan Hill Middle School. If you know Lou, you know that he has a bigger than life person. He's always there. Um, always willing to help, he don't get the opportunity to help anybody out or solve any issue he has. You know, he has also played an essential part in, um, training new custodians that we have coming into the district. And again, I do want to thank for that. And then the third person I nominated, you'll see him in a minute, Mr. John Douglas. Um, I wanted to recognize John because I think that he's always there whenever I need him. I think he's underappreciated, he, his office is always open. Any question I've ever had, even not to say mixed to his job, he's been there, helped me, guided me, as I am the new one. And John deserves it, and I've only been here four months, but I've been working on a great job, and everything that he does, so. So, and Martin, I got a question for me, people say, I believe, recommend.
Yeah, the mic, Megan, yeah.
All right, thank you, yes, um, Mrs. Martin and I recommended two teachers from middle school. Like to recognize today on behalf of the H R department. Of our first recommendation, for the award goes to, um, is Martha Damian. Martha Damian is an eighth grade math teacher, and we would like to recognize her for outstanding dedication to our students, staff, and district. Martha has generously contributed her time and expertise by serving on a district board of education committee and supporting the work of our professional learning committees on end for middle school. She consistently leads thoughtful, reflective conversation, and deepens teacher practice and student learning. In addition, Martha mentors new math teachers, helping them grow and thrive in our school community. And she serves as a valued member of the instructional leadership team. Her leadership committed and collaborative spirit truly made a positive impact on our school.
All right, so, uh, the ninth, Mr. Dr. Duncan, an L V I L teacher in our grade. Um, I'm very into L V I L, which is for literacy, digital innovation lab teacher. Mr. Dr. Duncan for exceptional contribution to building a positive culture and climate. Dr. brings energy, creativity, and fun to our L V I L classes, fostering an environment where students are inspired to learn and explore. He designs innovative STEM lessons and incorporates interdisciplinary studies. Uh, the current student is incredibly and makes connection to the process of it. The bunch is dedication, creativity, and positive spirit, inspiring students, the staff, making our school communities brighter and more.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you very much to everyone who was recognized. On, uh, we are moving on to presentations, and first up, we have National Principal Club. Um, so, October is National Principal Club, so we are celebrating our people with our leadership, vision, and commitment to every student. Um, uh, sorry, I'm just standing here. Um, so we do want to thank our control and our physical for everything that they do. And, um, of course, we also invite our teachers, who are very valuable to me, to thank them as well. But if you will, we're gonna leave, and I will just leave the names of our principals and principal schools. And, um, it's quite a list, so if you're here, maybe you can stand up for me, because I think you, uh, maybe who follows that, totally, I guess, we have two pages here of names. Uh, and I'll judge in advance, but I could do some of my name, I'm still learning and meeting people. So if I left your name off, come on, I have to work, and we'll have to pronounce it correctly, I'll be. So I'll start with our principals, we have Melissa Boyd from Nathan Hale. Kia Dunkin from Paul Revere Primary, and it's, you dog. Uh, Daniel Graver from Jordan Washington. Heather Gray from Specialized Unit Services. Greg Paul from Nathan Hale Middle. Megan Hill from Kerr. Kevin Holt from Newton. Uh, Grant, a horseman from Angel Academy. Uh, Lorraine Kippen from Nathan Hale in, uh, primary. And Marie Mayorga, so the buyer has the moral middle. Uh, Diana Murray from Paul Revere. Isabel Santori from Brady Arts, and Felicia Smith from Florida in the band. So if we could take a minute, we'll recognize our principals and just. Okay, you've done this, we have to our assistant principals. Cynthia Bader from Nathan Hale Middle. Ashley Grace from Veterans. Melissa Carter from Nathan Hale. Kelly Comish from Paul Revere Primary. Thank you. Melissa Kuchar from Newton. Jordan Martin from Kerr. And Valerie Wright from Jordan Washington. All right, and moving on to our coordinators, we have Munchiko Amo with Special Ed. Catherine Haperton with Special Ed. Uh, Terry Hampton from English Language Arts and Social Studies. Joey Chris Veroni from American Design. Heather Erickson from Special Ed. A J McKey from Special Ed. Kristen Palmer from Grant. Colleen Scrub, Karen Bass from Special Ed, and Zach Bitt. And to the vectors, we have Unit Alvarez from Labor and Culture and Learning. Alma Pannas from Early Biology. Ernest Chirillo from Special Ed. Don Better. Dawn Bearden from Char. Jeffrey Hart from KC. Stephanie Greenberg from Digital Assessment and Communication. Tiffany Howser from Tech. Three Miles Leadership and Philo Shays from Building and Ground. All right, so this is the reference. My goal killer is to Special Ed and Jeff Sutter for Children's Home. And we, so to present it, Miss Tiffany Deverell for curriculum and discussion. Uh, Penny Green Grayton, Services and Accomplishments. Lucy Moreno from Digital Defining and Harry Fisher Esha. All right, so again, thank you to our principals, assistant principals for every effect there is and all of our leaders. And I want to make sure, not skipping anything, next up, we have our student advisory board. I would like them now to do that.
There is. The student advisory board members, we choose to give them a praise award every month at the Board of Education. The award will recognize an eighth grader from each middle school that enters the following class.
Responsibility. Learning the proper material, staying in class, turning in overtime, kind. Kindled others, has my things to say, shows empathy.
Shows attention to others, correct place and students, gives everyone a big. Leadership contributes to class discussions, sets an example for others, creating a positive environment.
So this will be the format that the students will recognize the GUR eight, uh, leadership award that they're trying to give every month. They'll have the student's name and they'll have, um, a chosen student that collectively selects based on these criteria to recognize similarly how staff members are being recognized by the administrators in the district. Uh, our student advisory board members decided that the time is going to stay as a project. Thank you.
Right, so we've got that. Um, okay, moving on, we will move on to our financial analysis and board discussion of the this year twenty twenty six budget. This is a presentation. I'm going to invite Ms. Moreno to pick up. And just, uh, twelve years, same setup there. Uh, really, uh, the purpose of today as a discussion item is for the board to have a basis of understanding for this year's budget.
Well, it's presenting, I'm sorry.
Uh, this panel will introduce this.
Do you have any agenda for tonight?
Uh, he was invited by his colleagues, isn't it?
Uh, he's not a district employee. I think he's an elected official. I don't believe he should be up there doing anything to do with the budget. Uh, lawyer, could you, uh, stand in for me, please? I don't know. Who's calling up the coffee? The, the board can invite anyone they want to, to address. Did, did, was there a vote taken or invited by the board? It was just very decisional.
I don't believe I need to take a vote to invite someone.
I'm hearing with the, uh, board, I guess, board can decide that let anyone speak. Board can decide from the board. No voting.
I have a question.
Do you want to make a motion? We'll decide.
If after this presentation, we feel comfortable involving in a budget, is that possible or no? Uh, I think it was to you. Yes, yes. So if after they present and you feel comfortable with the budget, can you then vote on the budget?
Or it's not only agenda, you can vote. That's been actually our mission.
So, uh, so we need to, uh, entertain everyone. My name is Lisa Madam. We have a few statistics. And, uh, this is my data role. Uh, we in, uh, in terms of the previous?
Uh, the previous, yeah.
It's, uh, it's, uh, visit in, uh, in regards to financial analysis. He, uh, is helping the district in regards to, uh, explaining the, uh, budget in a different light that would, um, assist with the board be more involved with, um, the financial process and the budget for the year. So, um, so right now, what we see here is, uh, in regards to the, uh, twenty twenty six to hold, uh, budget expenditures. Uh, as you can see, uh, in, for example, you know, that would be very high chart, most of the, uh, uh, expenditures, uh, is, um, are for, uh, salaries, which is, uh, thirty nine dollars. And, um, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, thank you everyone, uh, for being here. Um, I've already been semi-introduced. I am an old district chairman. Uh, this is my business. I donated, uh, this service of honor to the district because, uh, it has made a big difference in how we go budget for the city of Atlanta. Um, it's not a stress though. This is not your budget, right? It's, it's represented above the budget that has been proposed. But I think one reason we should not necessarily rush to vote based on this, uh, per Mr. Gasm's concerns is that this is a representation of the proposed budget. Uh, so it's not to, uh, as Ms. Moreno said, give you some different ways to look at it for the sake of transparency and understanding because eighty nine dollars is a lot of tech in, in, uh, districts. Uh, also have moving parts and a lot of costs. So, uh, again, the vote is simply to just facilitate understanding and to give the public insight can be something that, like finance, might be hard to get a whole list of understanding. So, um, yeah, I don't know what we order operations to put. I think it's sort of drive it or walk. It is interrupting too, I think. I just want to make that clear. I'm not just walking through script. I'm just facilitating, uh, interaction, I think. The hope, uh, was to have a discussion on the board. Right, I'm just sort of trying to throw the value information on the screen, uh, to support that.
So, Ms. Maria, I think we maybe like to begin to view if there are anything to highlight. And I'll just see what the next agenda item is, district security priorities, stat and discussion. And I do, in the state that's due to, if the number of people is closely related in the, uh, committee.
So, we created a, a number of different, uh, discusses. You know, what this is, is just the proposed expenditures uh, in the budget that was proposed. Uh, it's not been modified in any way. And so as you go sort of from top left to right, um, to top left, these are like categories of spending, right? So salaries, for example, if we select that, it, it focuses the rest of the information on the screen so that we can look at things like year over year changes of budget. Uh, or around here, we can go down into greater detail.
And there, I'll, I'll just turn on there. Like, as you might see, um, there's red areas, um, for example, on the top right for, uh, regular people, um, core timing. Um, that's year over year change. Um, the reason, I would say, if, you know, there is a need space in, in, uh, that section is that we just briefly negotiated with, uh, the I D A, uh, in regards to their salaries. And, uh, of all, we have budgeted a personal one for the remaining three, um, union contract. Um, we're personally negotiating that D I U, uh, D I S P A four thirty and D I S P A three thirty, which luckily, um, hopefully by the end of the night, they will try to basically, uh, execute it.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, to the board of awareness, uh, we can sort of slice by any category that you might be interested in, in focusing on. Um, here on the top right, uh, is a disman twenty dollar year over year change. So if we look at, compared to last year's budget, how much has this budget changed? And here, this is at the account level. So, in a financial ledger, you have a chart of accounts. This is sort of the most detailed tag that you can put, uh, in this case on an expenditure uh, to sort of, again, to know what it finds you or what sort of layer in the organization. Um, red, I'll just call your attention real quick to where it increased. Similarly, yellow, all the tension red deep freeze. And again, the hope is, just like this, the land is that we can have a discussion around any area of focus or just simply let the board know why there was a change, uh, and, and, you know, sometimes I know that all of them, those discussions can take weeks otherwise. So, uh, again, that's a hope. And, and I want the board, I urge the board to, uh, question, uh, or, or to ask me to select. So you slice it as.
This is going to be an interactive discussion. So if there's anyone who has questions, um, in the government, we have definitely to any area of budget, but to ask your budget partner.
And real quick, we also have, uh, same thing for the revenues. Uh, you know, I think the government has a lot of discussion of revenue, but similar focus, similar arrangement. Um, and then finally, the comparison of the proposed budget to last year with regard to spend, I think, uh, with regard to policy as a, as a legislative body. Uh, this is where the board has an opportunity to connect. Budgetary process to what the district is setting. We heard the impact from the public tonight. It's important for government to be able to respond or, or adapt when these things occur. Uh, so again, we have this analysis to help, uh, with that policy, uh, discussion before that. So, I think that's it. Again, I wanted the board to have an understanding of what we're offering. Uh, so, so if you want to facilitate any discussion of what's the way to take the money.
Yeah, and if you'd like to put on our, before we move to the next. Okay, so initially, I already mentioned in regards to the people programs, um, operations. Uh, and I'm just going to go for the top, you know, three or four that are listed that are in red and to why there is a change from last year's business. Um, operations and maintenance of plants, that is, um, primarily buildings and grounds. Um, we are planning to perfectly have, uh, various different projects with board approval, uh, in, uh, in regards to. So, um, and, um, and with your guidance to see how we can proceed. Um, there is some, and being old, uh, like safety, uh, situations that we have there. So then we, you know, all of them certainly, we don't think, uh, if that money is not being used for purposes, we could obviously, um, use those funds for, uh, the summer, like safety project, which I know, um, Mr. Will Jay is working currently and, um, getting a cost estimate. We see that earlier in the speech, um, in regards to refinishing the Nathan Hale gym floor, which is much needed and that, uh, we should be getting a, uh, a cost estimate for the veterans group and, uh, supporting returns on that. Uh, and then the third, uh, section here, it is payment support special event program. So last year in August of twenty twenty four, the Board of Education approved, uh, the district to proceed with, um, doing lots of payments for the addition for Spalding, which is, uh, part of the I can power cooperative, but it's located in, uh, in middle of the reporting. So there's a total of eleven school districts, um, that are really part of, uh, the I can power cooperative. So, uh, instead of the district having to pay, um, annual payments for the next fifteen years for, which would amount to over two and a half million dollars, we are paying a full of one point eight million dollars, which less, less than, we can, as a sum of it, which is three hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars and we're paying the remaining dollars, um, this year. So that's a one type payment and, um, you don't have to worry about in the future and save our, uh, funds, you know, in years of interest, you know, so it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a benefit for them. Uh, people transportation services, uh, in regards to, um, we have, Illinois is our, uh, transportation provider, um, they increased their, um, their transportation costs forty five percent. Um, and what they have been doing is in the past, because of COVID, uh, they've been doubling up on buses. Where like, even though they're within the capacity limit, they're collapsing there, which creates like issues and kids just, you know, not being friendly with each other. So, um, they have been, you know, uh, the, you know, uh, in getting, uh, drivers, you know, and hiring more drivers, which again has, have given them the ability to, um, separate those rounds and have a, uh, a reasonable amount of, um, students and each ones. And, uh, provide, obviously, uh, a safe, uh, ride home and ride to school. Oh, sorry, I would say I do have consumption transportation. If I doubling up on the buses, is that helping to decrease the amount of time that our students are on the bus? Well, it's because they require themselves. So, um, it's also more efficient timelines, uh, by separating already. So these are very specifically, uh, moving to location. So, um, you know, it is, uh, a benefit, you know, just for them to be separated. In fact, it kind of how it was pre-COVID, which, uh, although I would say that can even self-transportation has drastically increased as well. Um, this past year, um, we, we spent over two hundred thousand dollars in the beginning of the service. Um, and, and we do utilize two different types of, uh, companies, uh, besides the camp service and then of safety certification, which, um, they have additional, like, um, care for students. Obviously, especially in, they're a little more expensive, but it's, um, the more secure. It's not that I'm saying it's, you know, not going to, but it has more, more features and then, and then they believe, you know, schools, students, especially start all features. Is that a need that you've seen increasing, that it increases graphically? Do you see it continuing to increase graphically or what was eventually happened? Um, I'm hoping I will plan to, you know, and I'll be honest, I don't know with, uh, the situation that we're testing in, uh, in the country. I don't know how, how that probably works. So that's very, it's variable. So we will, uh, we speak with the I N F. And, um, if, if we are able to use, uh, the camp company, um, for, um, these services, I mean, we're going to try to use the camp company to develop. And then, uh, yeah, and, uh, okay, um, yeah, I'm just trying to think, um, sorry, you know, like I haven't fully looked in, in this, uh, program. Um, I'm trying to think what in. Okay, so media services is basically, um, ranks, um, primarily, um, we say one, then two, then four, but then also we use the media services, uh, as, so as a formative, um, has expired and, uh, there, it's no longer exist, is the, why there is a, or if there's a problem, maybe I guess you could say, um, in regards to the, the media, we, we don't have the most of the, uh, because it, you know, has, uh, fun. Uh, also, it's, it's a social services. Unfortunately, we lost the, um, school engagement process grant. Um, so we are no longer able to use those funds, uh, anymore because we all have. Uh, even though we did absorb, uh, the, uh, fourth time first, um, uh, and they're working throughout the district, these, uh, that's now coming out of the. Okay, so here in regards to revenue, if you scan the very first line, the other restricted benefits from government to the state. I just, I look at that as forty-nine ninety-eight, then it is in the red. It's probably, or there's a change, is neither because of the fact that, that, right? Although grants no longer exist. In regards to the educational purpose levy, it increased slightly because of the fact that the property tax will be. So there was an payment that had to be done in order to receive that, right? And we received that, those funds from the state at fiscal twenty-five. So at fiscal twenty-six, it's the payment. And we currently have yet to receive anything that has to do with property taxes because we haven't been built. And we have, everyone has a bill, we have to receive the tax bill, reversal making room as well. Is there any to me question?
Can I type dialogue, if any question? Is that, I think maybe I like going to tapping a little bit more expensive way of just kind of understanding, you know. I know sometimes it's difficult to spell conditions and I wonder, are any of our current budgets, can we fully staff up, because our budget only allows staff up? If we are able to find structures and various staff to work with.
Oh, that's the right kind of.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say it's preferable to have your entire people compared to contractual agencies and in teaching to staff through those agencies. So we would be, we would be able to cover, you know, the cost, you know, for the. There actually is less. That's the goal usually.
Yeah. One of the fall, and then I'm wondering if you could speak just a little bit. A little bit about the location, I know there's a lot of other, but those are actually all of the.
Well, in regards to teachers, we've recently negotiated their contract. And there is, there is a study out there with business managers in the surrounding area. And I would say that they are fairly competitive with the void rate right now for teachers. Knowing that I didn't be also in the district, but you know, like we do tire much to compensate our teachers. Fairly, and paying them very hard and paid above every penny. Over the past few years, I would say, because what you're seeing, maybe we have to be able to address the people free, the starting salaries for the teachers. So, yeah, so you know, a lot of the salaries spent off of sale is that in the surrounding.
Are there any other questions and wonders, any areas you'd like to say?
Same question, that's the full side of the other unit, okay.
Yes, they are, they're about, well, we, in regards to the secretaries, you know, we did notice that they were at the lower side. And I think this past negotiation, we helped bring them up a little bit more. And I'm hoping that they are happy with the contract that they were, you know, given in the rates. Obviously, there's times when it takes a little bit, kind of a couple cycles of negotiations to bring it out to the board. And I think the secretary, it was, it's been a process with them. So, but I think it's a lot better than what it was. In regards to the care problems, they're, they're pretty late in the median. And then the SEIU is around like four is the median, but it's probably around there. In regards to.
What's the difference between homeless and.
I just, I put this on in case it's helpful. I do spend this by an hour, but this is my, so.
Okay. So I agree with you, I already previously have mentioned in regards to these are the funds that create the entire budget. There is nine funds and then the activity account. Activity account, I visions just, we just use the activity account. In I visions, just to kind of keep the balance, you know, so it's just a starting balance and then the other side, then the end of that. Really only the transaction for the activity account. That's a very valid one. In regards to the seasonal fund, I can see it, you know, various reasons as to whether there's a change. And then you can see on the top right that one of our biggest vendors is the Iceman Flaw. We, it varies based off of obviously student enrollment. So if we tried our very best to calculate and estimate how many, you know, kids are already there and how many may go into the cooperative, but they provide a great service. They have GLP, they have exchange and care. And I don't know the answer, it's all that well, but I know this is accurate rule.
Yeah, so just real quick, again, this, this is a look at the full budget. So that's this home here next to last year's funding. And so the reason I brought this up, just as an example, if you wanted to talk salaries, you could say that staff of last year, ninety-one point eight million spent, we are proposing nearly thirty-five. Sorry, you know, I think, then the questions in regards to how much staff would this budget allow us to hire, right, on top of current levels? The hope is that this report could, again, get a sense of what it took to operate the district last year versus what being proposed this year. So, just beginning, what this shows is the total spending last year. But then if we wanted to again select something and updates to the show what we're highlighting, so we can do that by vendor, we can again do it by the fund. It just gives you an all of numbers to look at. And then what proportion of that was vendor spending? And again, the thinking here was, you know, vendor spending is discretionary. It may sometimes be insurance services, it may be one-off. It's usually good at least for the council to understand what's an ongoing cost year-over-year versus what might have just been for a less than. So hopefully that helps.
I actually don't see this name as one of the. Large, large one being a case of, you know, salary. It's the negotiations being that we've negotiated. There's also grants that are affected. We do have a small account that's amounts, you know, from title grants. And then also this type of amount for these TV have been had to be spaced by five hours. The amount allocated, even though it's a little funding. So that's why, there's been various factors there. Then I went, and actually, you know, I did remember in regards to teacher vacancy. So we have, in fiscal twenty-five, we have, you know, a certain amount of money. It's all over twenty-five thousand dollars. We did not extend that until after July one, because the previous tenant, we had this grant. And we, we had, you know, we gave the, you know, we just started the fund with with the staff, you know, you know, the terms. It was right before the second quarter tax fulfillment. And that created huge issue with the president office, you know, the president office is the office that hold our money along with all of the school issues. And so then this, this year, they have requested for us to hold funds after July, July first. And then soon as they lost the opportunity to, if there was not a teacher returning, the check is going to be effective in that July, this is the fourth quarter. And so then we have those funds along with fiscal twenty-six, as a teacher vacancy grant. It's one of the hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. So, and it varies as well. So there's various factors in there, along with.
With this for salaries, are you able to click on it and see kind of like teachers are paid this? Our contracts, employees are paid this? And does it break that down to kind of each category, I guess?
And like we have the salaries, salaries are going, you know, so long, but there's different cultural, you know, these are all cultural. I mean, everyone gets paid, you know, a lot of, they're categorized in different sections. So for example, teachers primarily are being out of the one thousand.
But I'm sorry, I can't see the screen from back here, it's blurred to me. That's why I, so it is broken down in, in there, like those categories.
We have over, I would say, four thousand account numbers in our accounting system. And I'm pretty detailed. I know I have been a headache with, you know, Del Bronco and, and interbreeding. Because I like to be very detailed and try to keep things also in a, like, base, like, full base of questions. Because we do have to compile reports at the end of the year for the state.
I'll just chime in here, this sort of thing is a process, right? Because the city, this is helpful to simply get some familiarity with the accounting, right? Without having to be an accountant. So that next year, it'll be a little bit more familiar as far as what rolls up to what, right? But, so I mean, the hope is that this gives an idea for a different approach, you know. So it'll take some time to learn what all to what, in my experience, for what that's.
I'd like to build off this breaking of this question. This is, we don't estimate, and I understand that contractual staff, they don't show off under educational salaries, right? Do you kind of have a feeling that a little bit?
Oh, no, they don't. And that they're not their own timers, they do not all under salaries. They fall under three ninety, which is a different, so they're a different concept. So for the whole part, it depends on what type of service, just how the service is providing. We have a lot of speech pathologists. So speech pathologists are under one oh fifty. So last year, we spent eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. The full budget for this year is one million one hundred seventy-six thousand. It is an increase, and roughly, if I estimate it roughly as below over a hundred thousand dollars. You know, and it's obviously based off of the contract, the, you know, helps more through the number of days that they were, which is the full year and how many dollars per day. So that's how everything is calculated and we have points approved or still go into those. And that's how we have it. So that's just an example of, you know, this type of services that the contract, speech pathologist, and, and we were having, we have cultural workers, but it's. No, I got it.
Whoopsie, those contract workers, they are not covered under the insurance or anything right to that, right? It's strictly salary, correct? No benefits included with that?
It's they, they have.
Correct, so we have a slide we can have that shows what we're saving by not paying their insurance premium to show what the, the actual cost difference is between a direct hire and a contracted hire.
On average, so in regards to a direct hire, I would think is a rough number. Starting rate with, you know, our salaries, it's around fifty-five thousand dollars. Benefits range, you know, anywhere between like fourteen or like, you know, depending on the type of insurance that a person gets. Where if it's a single PPO, one, it'll be fifteen thousand dollars, you know, on life vision and that's going to be that as well. But if you go to the even where the family insurance, it's stressful to do this. Because PPO two family is over thirty thousand dollars. Another contracted services that is solely contracted by independent contractors and it's like services. So every year, we spend around, you know, around two hundred dollars. And it's obviously being helped with need and, definitely, you know. Therefore, in a sense, you know, they're always the most protected, you know, we get, you know, events in the district and leaving, leave the needs.
Are there any other forward questions or any other areas you'd like to drill into?
And right here, in this, in regards to a full of social work services, this is our social worker account. And you see that a dress name becomes, and this is because of the removal of the, already a version of the. And we're fortunate enough to be fully staffed in this social work, you know, and we're.
As I said, to Mr. Burmice's comment, the hope was to have this be an introduction so that this is helpful next year. Whether or not the board can have one from this.
Are there anything that people have to highlight in the interim time, bringing covering people's.
We can hear this on screen, yeah, like you have a discussion subsequent to this.
We do, we have our district security priority that we discussed, probably not there. Maybe now we actually have a break time. But I really, I think, you know, and this is, you know, sort of exercising, you know, so far the problem is to begin, for members viewing what's applicable, what's sort of visual, what information to see and begin to allow the budget to have that expectation will be covered. So about the process, so many, so many people that have, and then I think, if you have any further questions that may come your way, we can get, I'm sure people may have. So thank you, John. So thank you, John. Um, all right, we're going to, I'm going to turn this over.
Good evening, uh Jeffrey Farr. I am the director of safety for District One Thirty. Um, I'm here to discuss view, uh, initial security and staffing. But I do want to preface, uh, by, by, uh, stating that there's a distinction of difference between safety And security, safety is, is more for accidental incidents. Uh, whereas uh security is more of your, more intentional for Uh circumstances. Although they're changeable, they are significantly different. But, uh, we have a safety department. Uh, currently, our, our district is comprised of uh twelve schools. Uh, one district office, one administrative service building, and a technology building. There's over twenty-eight hundred students and over six hundred staff. A pool of over thirty-four hundred individuals contained within the fifteen building. Security priorities, uh, for this year at least, uh, can provide a few things. Uh, I do want to state that this is a multi-year endeavor. Foremost, the, the priority is to upgrade the current infrastructures. And uh, for as separate as I am from buildings and grounds, there are times where our departments overlap. Uh, this is one of those times. Uh, building and grounds, uh, Mr. O'Shea is a role for Uh, we're going to play a significant role in upgrades of these buildings. Uh, moving on from there, we have some additional cameras that are needed Uh, at various locations, both inside and outside campuses. Not every door, unfortunately, has badge readers, so that will need to be addressed. As it happens, uh Superintendent Tish, uh Assistant Superintendent Tish Establish some presentations we held this Friday and next Wednesday. Uh, I invite the board to come and view the presentations, through these security vendors personally. Okay, I didn't know that should second. Uh, unbeknownst to the board, for whether or not you are, uh, we have something kicking up, kicking off Uh, beginning of the school year twenty twenty-six, uh, known as the Whistler Law. It is a state mandate that will require The board to furnish a re-employed with a mobile and silent panic alarm. Um There is uh currently grant funding available. Uh, but you don't, you don't want, you don't want to wait to be denied that grant and then be forced to Spend money you didn't, didn't anticipate spending. Uh, I've been in preliminary discussions, uh, with our current, uh, visitor management manager, Raptor. Uh, we are currently spending twenty-two hundred dollars a month for that service. Um, they have Uh, a badge that would satisfy the mandate. Uh, but that cost then jumps to five thousand dollars per month per building. Again, preliminary discussion, you know, we're, we're not agreeing to anything, just get, there are, there, there may be some Some other options, uh, that are more efficient, more effective. Uh, but we have yet to get there. Uh, and then Next, we have weapons detection now. But we're currently using the vault system, a four-year lease. Uh, at the end of the four years, after spending, you know, just over four hundred thousand dollars, those systems need to prepare. Uh, the alternative is a system called CHA. Uh, CHA, uh, is, 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 um Widely used, uh, Department of Defense, White House, uh Pentagon, and multiple major league stadiums throughout the country. Uh, it is more effective and more efficient and uh cheaper as well. Uh, so we're, we're entertaining and exploring that possibility to, to go that route. The amount of money that we spent, that you spent Uh, on the evolved systems for three machines, we found sixteen of chances. Uh, finding staffing. Everybody needs staffing. Uh, the third resource allocation figure is one point seven. One point seven people needed for every established position that you pick. Uh, we currently have six safety liaisons. And two are assigned to our middle schools only. Uh So of the twelve schools, there are nine schools that do not have safety liaison assigned to them. Uh, we also have nine crossing guards, like after tonight, at least, we have seven, but open the man to tonight. But we have eight posts, right? Um, so when you, when you have those needed positions and, like, you know, like last month, we spoke about how it's five people To get through student rivals, that's the goal, there are almost three, uh, sometimes four from the school, conducting the rivals. Uh, and then you have a safety liaison, and sometimes even myself. I will, will home check packs in the morning. But I put a minimum of five people needed, right? So you take those five people, you multiply it by one point seven, that's what you're supposed to take for For uh, the resource allocation number, so You know, a- as it is, we need about eight to nine safety liaisons per building Just for some miraculous. Uh, that's a high number, I'm not, I'm not advocating that we, we hire nine individual liaisons for each individual school. Uh, I, I think there's other things that we can do to uh, to significantly decrease the number. But But we'll get there. Uh, we also have nine crossing guards, we have eight different posts. The issue with crossing guards is, is typically, uh, those people that are geared towards that position Are older retired folks or, um, you know, stay-at-home moms that are looking to make some money in between, you know, school day. What we're finding is, you, you know There's a lot of doctor's appointments, they're in the bank. Uh, and then when, you know, the security guards' children get sick, you know, their, their involvement's sick, so That burden then shifts to an already, you know, safety liaison. Uh, and then when we can't do it because there's only one liaison there, then, then that burden falls onto the building administrators. Uh, and it just seems, keeps on going down and down and down. So ideally, we'd like to properly staff the, the apartments. Because There's a training issue and a, and a, a paid time off issue that also needs to uh go into this equation. In the event that, in the event that the district Uh, faces a negligence claim, right? There's going to be one of three assertions that, that the, the district will need to defend. And it's, you know, the failure to train, the inadequate training, or the incorrect training. So we're being put to a position to either staff and cover the, cover the buildings Or, or send somebody to train. Right now, we can't do both, we just can't do both, with the minimum we're And that concludes My whole question.
I appreciate your time, as you have discussed the whole board discussion, and I fully aware of the way I appreciate everyone sticking with us. Um, I would like to ask if my fellow board members have any questions, um, or anything you'd like to discuss about Our safety experience. Uh, and I, I have a question, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm curious of the, the sort of Moving to outline the priorities. Um, do you have a sense of, of what we can, uh, cover in this year's budget, basically, of what we can maybe at this year? Uh, if we can, if we
I, I would, I would focus all of my attention and resources on the infrastructure. That's, that's where I would start my, but But once that is, is satisfied, then I would move on to Cameras and glass.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions in the session, the board members?
We have a factor of, uh, whether we need to, uh Militerate the barriers to the other facility, but currently don't have them. That's something probably very well needed, and uh Kind of couldn't find some money for it, and that, still doors are accessible, so maybe outside to get in.
And as to other, Bill, I'm just going to answer a question for the industry sector as well, who has Please pop up.
Um Not yet, may, maybe if, you know, you come to the presentation on, on Friday and, and Wednesday, we'll have a better idea. Uh, but I also have to lean into, uh, Mr. O'Shea. Uh, he would have a, a better idea of, of the infrastructure cost.
I mean, I can't think of a way else, I really like to know, God, there's only time to secure doors. It's not a good way, anyway, to do it for.
Three.
They have a presentation during the day or afternoon?
They are, um, morning and early afternoon.
How many years do we have left with our evolved contract?
Two.
Is there
Assistant, the woman fish, who's in, especially with them, offering Trying to get out of the lease. Unfortunately, we're not successful in doing so.
Thank you, that was my not so much.
Will they provide us a penalty dollar enough to get out of this plan, I'm sure, no?
I wouldn't need five, right?
No, so right now, I'd just find me just to pay guys to the contracts that we cannot get out of the Um, that's the contract, though. We can ask stuff to break the lease, but, and then see if they give the dollar amount, we have Exercise that, yeah.
I mean, you got a version of that, that, that tried to raise the lease, we got the, the, the I think you, listen.
Um, I'm sorry, but one other question, uh, going back to that I contacted, that we can ask about, we can, how quickly is So, for the board in, in, in the, with the, of, of Cause we Uh, not before, maybe, just add, add in, like, so can we sort of start working on this, given some of the costs?
We, we can get that done, yes.
Doesn't have to be, that may, but if, if one of the board knows what kind of scene was done.
Sure.
All right. Are, are there any further questions for Mr. Farr? Uh, and thanks so much. All right, moving on, uh, we will move on to our content agenda. Uh, so I have, um, a short schedule, if there's anything anyone would like to From the content agenda that we
I would like item K, Maxon Healthcare, removing firms from consent for destruction of extension. And item C, diligent community, and Q, life trust. Either be remitted something done or passively open If you don't, when public. Okay, same, T, and U. Are there any other items anyone would like to add, or, sorry, remove from paper? Uh, we're here to discuss a few people have really, um, so for Please, please, I believe, of those, like, that Okay, good. All right, and, um, in that case, may I have a motion, please, to a three percent Remain, uh, to this meeting that I have five A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, L, M, N, and O. Right, that's a motion, please. Go ahead and add it.
Okay.
All right, if you, uh, if you can make a credible copy.
Uh, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
You're working it out?
Yeah.
Did you get there?
Yes.
So painting, you have this here now? Uh, Mr. Burmice, yes? Let's go to the role.
Yes.
You get it?
Yes.
It's not the best of mine, it's cool, it's, it's
Okay, wonderful, and then, um We go, may I have a, um Motion, please, to discuss Um Five, T, which is the resolution twenty twenty-six dash zero four four, of people of diligent community protocol. May I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
Okay.
Ready, ready? I'll second. All right, um, so This item is now on the floor for discussion And questions.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, why I'm trying, I'm sorry, why, why this platform? Do we currently have a platform that does what the diligent community Could do? Those are our current board docs, programs. They have upgraded their services. And so they are now being called diligent, um, I think Most of these services are, they may not be, they're, they're, or, another, some platform. Who's been working their hands for a month, really, really, I'll be up for you, but even though it's little Error that can come down with something on the program, we would put a check that's good, and they already fixing them, because they're using this. Or, um, this, I'm sorry, should I have, we have a mobile phone now, um, so that, um, right now, it's Something pretty difficult to navigate unless you're sitting at a computer, or the, um Getting the right team for voting, and Much, we just, that's mainly for the leader of the As a board or as a school district, but also for the, um, general public, yeah. And so My understanding is that board docs is becoming diligent, like that's the hope with, with putting this proposal forward. When do we, it comes at a pretty hefty price, right? Is, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. Um, is there anything else out there that might be less expensive and still do What diligent or board docs is currently? Um I would say that this would be with what we've been hearing from the general public about being able to navigate Board docs as a stand. Um, being able to get the integration from there From, from app, um, being able to act on the website, uh, break out, you get on there and take just somewhere out here, a couple of windows, and you gotta be And fix. Um, there may be, many schools, it looks like, may be board docs, um, as their Pleasure product, uh, for some of the very, very, many, uh, schools, I think, who always, I don't I don't, I don't know that there is anything any cheaper that offers all of the things that we, we already heard from Not only the people, but people who are That was one of my questions, pretty much, are we going to get our money towards out of this program? Does this mean, the means of what our community is telling us they want, so Thank, thank you very much for that, that's What I'm going to hear. No, I, I should feel, I just think In the beginning, probably, at some navigation, people have to figure it out, or, you know, put some training, and some tutorials online. I know they have an extensive, like, library of things for some Q and A's, and do that out. Thank you, I hope.
I, I'm curious, though, and I, I, the problem at the beginning is this, um, did we do any, um, cross comparison In certain comparisons to other services, I, I know diligent has a sort of Corner of the market, but, um, there are other, there are others that do, that offer, um, that offer newer products. But did we, at any point, go with it or, or be encouraged by other vendors, if they did something?
So board docs have been our, um, all of our documents, all of our board and store pieces are included with the products. And so we, we do this platform, we've been working with them for many, many months to, uh, try to figure out the community How to get them, how to communicate here, and we go One, and then two, go wrong. Um, and this is not a forever contract, I don't mean, um, this is something that we have to look at further, we can take into that, um We We have no choice, but it's two, or that's important, we, shows me how, how we know what we're doing. Uh, right for one year? Uh, price for one year? Pardon me? That price is for one year? Projected one year, but this is our migration package. This is connecting us to what we have, to what we're gonna have. And then be able to be on the subscription. This is making sure that everything we have, continue. So, and we see, I think, we're finished.
So we, we've had, um, diligent for a while. Last year, we gave, uh, ten thousand, um, ten thousand four hundred dollars, uh, for, for the software. And it's, it's gone up to twelve thousand four hundred. We're not gonna include any add-on options that they have listed on there, it's just basically the diligent community.
That's, that's. So, next, next year, are we gonna end up getting twelve thousand dollars again for this program?
I mean, that's not gonna pay off the subscription. So, service is now like a one five place because it's interactive and it's, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't do it, so, um, I don't think there is a product that would be a subscription base. Where we would have to make it.
Is it only the twelve thousand dollars now because it is that? I don't wanna use the word, the migration package, like, could it potentially decrease the cost next? I'm correct, right? This is our hybrid?
Okay, yeah, um, I could love really quick, um, that past, um, the past cost. Um, thank you. So, you know, so in, um, for fiscal twenty five, is looking for ten thousand four hundred dollars. So it seems it's gonna be a pretty standard. And they did do an upgrade a few years ago as well. Um, to this current platform, but now there is another upgrade, um, this is my standing, um, and now it's gonna be twelve thousand four hundred. We're hoping that this will grow a factor. That's it. Sorry, the app, sorry. Thank you.
And then, any further questions? Um, I think we could certainly leave the door open if we're not happy for diligent or if it's not being regulated.
Alright, uh, with that said, I have a motion to approve, uh, revolus- resolution twenty twenty six dash oh oh four of people of diligent community. I'll make the motion. You don't want to manage it?
I'll say, we.
I, well, I'll be.
Uh, more too much to, I can ask for, get me for a second?
Yeah.
I'll do two. Uh, since we have a P, those are the, um, training.
Yes.
Did you get there?
Yes.
Mr. Burmanger, yes? You got it?
Yes.
So you want?
Yes.
Warren? Thank you.
Yes.
Will be approved.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to, um, item two, resolution twenty twenty six six dash zero four five of people of light touch here, service agreement renewal. Uh, may I have a motion to bring it to the floor, please? Go ahead and add that. I'll second. Uh, are there any questions in the session on the side?
I'm very curious if any other photographers have been researched? Outside of light touch. Um, I have a child that is on the spectrum and has sensory processing disorder. And my experience with light touch over the years have been, they say, sit here, look here, smile, click, next. And my child with sensory processing disorder has been very vocal and sense the flash scares me. I had emailed the vendor and got, got a really jab response back. And it was something along the lines, like, we have to see so many schools, we have deadlines to meet, blah, 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 blah. I do not feel this company does a good job for all of our students. My child vocalized, these are my concerns. They said, sorry about it, kid, um, and moved on. As a result, I personally have not purchased pictures because they don't care about my child. Um, so I just wanna know if any other vendors in this area have, have been looked into?
Maybe my pieces as well. Um, yeah. At this point, I, I have not looked into any other vendors. Uh, it seems like, um, it hasn't been any issue. Thank you for making, uh, aware of the situation. What I can do is contact the representative, um, and see what can be built in regards to that situation. And what we do for students, um, with, uh, different sensitivities to, to light or anything that, um, anything that they may have. And in the meantime, I don't have any more. But, but other than that, I have not looked, um, and, you know, it doesn't really, yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Well, that is my personal experience. I, I think at three or four schools, it's the only thing. The bottom line, our kids are not cattle and shouldn't be shoved, shoved with. Our individuals, um, deserve the time. And maybe it takes five pictures before you get one good one. And, um, they, I just feel, and maybe it is with another company who finds you, just take the time and hear, hear what our students are saying. Because if it happened to my child, odds are it happened to someone else's too, and nothing else. So I just ask, the school year's already started. You know, it, you won't find someone immediately that may be, um, just in the meantime, I mean, renew this contract, and in the meantime, look for other vendors that might care a little bit more.
Mr. Moreno, that's something you would be willing to, um, keep on, not immediately, but, but in the time, and maybe inquire with light touch. Um, what their protocol is for discussion. Uh, you know, students, you know, sensory need.
Okay, well, for sure, I can, um, speak to the representative and see what they can offer. And, um, then if you have anything else, definitely, and how, we'll, um, help them.
Thank you. Yeah, I love it. Um, uh, may I have a motion then to approve item Q, resolution twenty twenty six six dash zero four five, approval of light touch here, service agreement renewal? How many motion?
Oh, sorry.
For the general, please?
It's good, you want?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Banning?
Yes.
You're quick, yes?
Yeah.
Mr. Burmanger, yes? Forget your?
Yes.
Forget it.
Yeah.
Okay, approved.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. Uh, first we have A, twenty twenty five dash twenty six, proposal for an additional care professional in health. Uh, this is an action item. May I have a motion to bring to the floor? Make the motion? Okay, I'll do it, I'll have a vote. Over. Uh, six A, um, I forgot my, I forgot that word. I'm written with that here. Uh, are there any questions or comments or discussion on the side?
I think any of us.
Nothing else. Um, may I have a motion then, Phil, please?
Make a motion.
Maybe, okay. I'll second. Alright, go ahead, please. Uh, it, uh, I'm, uh, forget.
Um, yes, sir. Yes, it's good to be wrong.
Yes.
Mr. Banning?
Yes.
If we get him?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Alright, um, and then, moving on, uh, B, twenty twenty five, twenty six, it's ever F per middle school club proposal. It's an action item, may I have a motion please to bring it to the floor? I have some questions. Okay, I, sure. Um,
with, with this proposal, um, I, I am in support of the spring musical, I just wanna make that very clear.
Okay, this is the, uh, sorry. Yeah.
Sorry, come be quiet.
Motion is accepted. Awesome.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so, yes, so this is, so we are talking about the club proposals for Ever F Per, um, school clubs, catch-up club, gardening club, and creative arts. Okay, any, uh, questions in the session?
No, but I am, it's, oh.
I will.
Ooh, pardon?
Absolutely. I was in my daughter's part, she was excited about her new, um, the love for that. I was, alright, if no further questions or discussion, may I have a motion please to approve? I'll make a motion? Any further questions?
I'll show you. Oh, I'll see you.
Alright. Well, hopefully.
Um, Mr. Burmanger, yes? Mr. Banning?
Yes.
It's good to be wrong.
Yes.
Did you get there? Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Well.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, uh, C is the Ever F Per Middle School and Veterans Memorial Middle School Spring Musical Proposal. Uh, it's an action item, may I have a motion please to bring it to the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, in a second?
I'll say.
Okay, and I, I think you have some comments?
Right or no? Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, and like I said, I'm in full support of this musical because it's wonderful. Um, have any other venues been looked at? Other than that?
Yeah. Um, for this particular case, they, my understanding that, um, that two eighteen will not be quite available, and we're probably not worth a system for, knowing who it's been, but, uh, we just go, we're in a facility. So, um, right now, this school year, it doesn't look like that would be a viable option. Um, they had previously, uh, had the available off-site, which then puts the transportation a little harder. And so, um, we are between rock and hard place because it's local. It does make it easier for several of our families, and so, um, and we expect this to go along with, with renting and the time you're spending. So, um, we are kind of limited with some of our options, but, um, tried to do it in, um, technically, for our staff. So that it, it may be possible.
Mr. Burmanger? I, I hear your concerns, I think the number one issue there was the heat of the from what it sounds like, the heat for students into the and, uh, it would be really encourage the school needs. I'm pretty sure of under, pregnancy and performing, I think that would make at least a tangible improvement if we do have to say, cut it.
And with that current heating and cooling system over there, I don't know, and maybe Mr. O'Shea might be able to speak up on that. I don't know how that would be able to, it's, it's scheduled to occur the end of April, very beginning of May. Most people still have the heat on. That's not a building that you can turn the AC on in the auditorium and keep the heat on every place else. But when you have, I mean, the kids were miserable. I, I wish, I wish that would change. They were absolutely miserable, makeup dripping off of their faces because it was so hot. So is all of two eighteen not available? Shepherd, Richards, and Eisenhower, none of them.
Well, we gotta think that within the, we buy this area, the sensitive veterans and parents, maybe, uh, that we want, and, yeah. So, um, I know that with the Eisenhower sites being under construction, I think some of the things there, I think, the whole schedule, but I think some of the, you have to be registered on the site.
Alright, I see, it's also, same, same. True.
Yes, so I think, um, that creates a little bit of, because we're having to, uh, so we actually did talk about, if I get off, number nine for the party, where maybe we didn't not put some people, um, in the space, um, that we want to work discussions on itself, though. Whether it was to get, uh, everybody, you know, never come to talk.
So I'm, I'm hearing what she said, but the problem still is, there's no way to temperature control that built it. So how are we gonna solve that? Are we gonna get twelve portable air conditioning units and put them in there? So everyone in attendance and those performers up there are nice and cool? Um, the kids literally ran from one side of the stage around the back through the teacher's lounge to get to the other side of the stage or to, to their dressing room. So there's just, there's so many safety issues going on right now. I'm hearing you, you know, it's great keeping it in the house. I love that we have this. A hundred years ago, I probably wouldn't be having this conversation. But I just, there has to be other options we can explore other than just settling on guts because habit and it's for but, that's not
live with hand here. We were really trying to make it as easy as possible for our family, which is the other location was to just, yeah, we, or we, yeah. Um, I mean, this, this proposal here is going to just, we decided, we can look at the location and various other things that have come with it. Or we are, actually, uh, to work with them. We're not close there, you know? Would that be alright, we do this, but he does agree?
Yes, I, I want them to get started. I just, I want us as a board to, to think about this stuff. Like, I just, I don't think vets is, I, vets isn't the one for this. There has to be something out there that fits the needs of our, our community. I mean, I, I bring my child to St. Rita when it was there. I was very vocal about, I didn't like St. Rita because it wasn't close, close to home. If I had to choose between vets and St. Rita, I'm gonna take my kid and as many people safely fit in my car, and I will drive them to and from St. Rita. Because St. Rita is a climate-controlled environment. Where the kids, it was just much safer all around. So all I'm asking is, like, yes, let's say yes to this proposal so we can start, you know, the kids can get going on this. We have some time, limited time, but we do have some time to look or explore other venue on.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, and discussions? I, I certainly support that, and I'm happy to have you explore, if you, for that, for the saying options. Um, may I have a motion please to approve item C, uh, for the middle school and veterans memorial spring musical proposal?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Well, hopefully, Mr. Burmanger.
Mr. Banning?
Yes.
Mr. Banning?
Yes.
Did you get there?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Mr. Burmanger, yes? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
It's good to be wrong.
Yes.
Approved.
Alright.
Can't miss today, sorry.
Alright, moving on, uh, I would say we have the foundational items, um, does anyone have any question or comment about any of these foundational items? Have you reported, have you reported?
Well, you're good, though.
Alright, um, moving on then, will those be agreed? Hmm, okay. Okay, just in the report. Uh, we, we'll begin with the president's report. Um, and then, as we begin, I acknowledge it is late, and, uh, hi, switch that scene. And bear with me, I have some comments I have here, um, that unsettled, so I have a log. Okay, here they are. I, uh, would just like to thank the administration, uh, the committee, the department heads, my fellow board members, and in particular, Ms. Moreno for engaging in these financial analysis. Um, you know, I, I recognize that over the last few months, the board and the district, we've undertaken, we've been working together. Uh, we've leaned into the process and, um, are creating a foundation for expectations and engagement moving forward. And elected the, uh, critical that the board performs due diligence on behalf of the public trust. Um, and that, uh, is especially through, for matters of public quality, of, the budget policy. And sometimes this process requires sort of slowing down, um, in the short term, so that we can, uh, work more effectively together in the long term. Um, so I recognize that this is great, it's a concern, um, to the board, uh, publicly and to the staff. My hope is that, um, this can be the basis for a new, in the process of going forward, of course, for the benefit of our school children and our community. But just making some limitations, uh, uh, moving on, uh, we will go to listed home support, that can be dated.
I have a couple of items, uh, the first item is that, um, this is, that we can participate in the process of the tree event. This upcoming weekend, the district is participating in New Island from the tree event, so we don't say. Once, great.